This is the January 11th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Rising Sun Mayor and Commissioners. And may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Shepard.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Thank you. With that, we call the meeting to order and pledge allegiance. So tonight, it's with immense sadness that I announce that a former Commissioner Stephen Norton has passed over the weekend. Stephen was a fierce advocate for the Town of Rising Sun. He served from 2011 to 2013, and he also was many years on the Cecil County Public Library Board of Trustees. Stephen continued to have just the energy about him for the town even after serving. I would many times run into him at community events or whatever it may be, and he was always passionate about what was going on. In 2019, when we discussed some ideas of changing uncontested elections, he was very passionate about making sure that we continued to still hold elections even if there was nobody to challenge. So, you know, he was definitely one of a kind. Many times, I would have the great pleasure of just going over to his house and just sitting on his back porch with him and discussing things and drinking a beer. And he would be, as he was fighting his cancer, drinking lemon or drinking iced tea because he couldn't drink alcohol. But, you know, I'll miss having those conversations with him and miss Stephen and his passion and friendship. So with that, I'd like to hold a moment of silence for former Commissioner Stephen Norton. With that, do we have a public presentation type? Looks like none. No business meetings. Is there any citizen input? Here or none? Staff report, Town Commissioner?
Yes, I just have a couple of things to give you a heads up on some work that's going to be coming before the Mayor and Commissioners in the next couple of meeting cycles. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of pieces of proposal of what we've been trying to do while starting to materialize. One of the things that we need to do, and Commissioner Vaughn will elaborate more on the whole report, is if you recall back in 2019, the Mayor and Commissioners adopted a comprehensive plan. In that comprehensive plan, it called for basically areas that were perceived to need to be rezoned for a variety of reasons. One of them that would be that they sort of resembled spot zoning to some degree. And, you know, a quick highlight of what spot zoning is, is that your zoning in a community is sort of supposed to have a transition and a flow. In other words, if you had a, and I'm going to give you the extreme, is if you had a residential neighborhood of 300 homes, you wouldn't want to put light industrial, a property that's zoned light industrial in the middle of that residential neighborhood. That's what is sort of considered spot zoning. A certain way, and one or two of the lots are zoned another way residentially. And we have a lot of examples of that, in large part because back in the day, as we always say, "back in the day," the town would allow property owners to just come in and say, "I want to rezone my property." And on one hand, when it's done that way, that's how you end up getting with spot zoning because you're only, the elected body at that time is only focusing on that one particular parcel that's asked to be rezoned, and they may or may not have taken in the totality of the zoning in its area. So in addition, some of those properties, for all intents and purposes, are acting or operating in the same way that the other properties around them are. And I'm only assuming that maybe at one time, a previous property owner had the idea of doing something with a particular property, but they never followed through with that. So the end result is we're stuck with what is called spot zoning, and you really don't want that to exist in your comprehensive plan. So we have some properties, like down on Mount Street, for instance. Commissioner Vaughn, you were involved in those meetings, and Commissioner Vaughn was a part of the planning commission. There's examples of where there are properties that have the same total acreage of land, they have the same style house built on it, but there's a couple in there that are zoned differently. And that's just not good housekeeping for it to be that way. So for instance, you're going to get a resolution in the future proposing to change that zoning to a zoning that's more consistent. It will have no impact on the property owner. It doesn't make them noncompliant. In some cases, it actually helps them, and this is an example of what I mean by that. Down on Main Street itself, there are some residential houses that, for whatever reason, are zoned central commercial, even though they are Victorian-style houses, and that's the way they're being operated. You could have a situation that something that would be permitted in the commercial zoning, you might not necessarily want that to occur in a residentially zoned area, in vice versa. And I'm going to give you a glaring example of that in a second. The other areas that we need to consider rezoning is if you recall in our comprehensive plan, we created what we're calling an employment center on the Route 1 corridor. And we're not large enough to qualify for what are commonly called enterprise zones. And enterprise zones are zoning and classifications that enable a prospective business to be able to come in and get tax incentives, either from the federal government, the state, and even in some cases, the county, on tax incentives to motivate them to come into a particular area and develop their business in that area. We will never qualify for that because we just don't have enough market to be able to support that. So what we did in our comprehensive plan is we created what was called an employment zone. And we've created some incentives to, through our impact fees, which, when you think about it, impact fees are monies that you collect for future things that need to be done with the sewered water. As we know, we've already fixed our sewered water. We have state-of-the-art sewered water. So what we could do in this employment center is create incentives that if a business comes in and develops a business that, let's just say it has $50,000 a year average salary jobs, if they come in and want to build that type of business in that employment center, they can get some incentive for doing that relief from impact fees to be able to move forward with that. The other thing we're talking about doing in the employment center is if you come in and you create a certain dollar value and a salary for a job, and you make a commitment to guarantee a percentage of those jobs to Rising Sun Town residents, now we're putting a position, we're putting our residents in a position that if they qualify for the job, there's an incentive for that employer to recognize that there's an incentive for them to make sure that the Town of Rising Sun resident gets that good-paying job. And the idea behind that is that if you get good-paying jobs in the community, the housing that is going to come, we're already seeing it, you'll have more of a tendency to build higher-value houses, let's say in the $250,000, $300,000, $350,000, $400,000 range. And when that happens, that pulls up the appraisal value of the houses that are over here. And I've said this a million times in the years past, is that people have, some people only have one poker chip in life to push to the center of the table, and that is the value of their home. And they use the value of their home to refinance it, to get home equity loans, to pay for a wedding, pay for an education, whatever. That's the value, that's their investment. So if we bring in more valuable properties by incentivizing businesses to bring in good-paying jobs, you sort of create a circular system here where it starts to feed itself. And you're getting good, sustainable businesses, good, sustainable jobs, good-paying jobs. People, now they have that kind of income, and they're coming into the different businesses in town, and everybody benefits from that. So that's the, you're going to be getting a recommendation from the planning commission, and I'll touch on that in a second in the near future for that. The other area is that we have, and this has been discussed many, many times, we have some areas in the town that, we all know we've had some bad development over the years. We've had some developments that have created huge traffic issues. We've had streets that are too narrow, a whole variety of things from old development. They're just building hundreds of homes on any particular property, might not be in the best interest of the town, especially when you start to talk about traffic impacts. And there are some large tracts of land that, back as early as 2018, the planning commission targeted as, "Let's change the zoning on that vacant piece of land to reduce the amount of homes that can be built there so that we can better control the traffic and the negative impact it has." So you're going to get some resolutions on that. And the final one I want to talk about that you're going to get is a resolution to change two lots in the Maple Heights subdivision. Right now, anybody who lives there knows that when you come up Maple Leaf Drive, Maple Heights Lane, and make a left on the Maple Leaf Drive, there's the hair salon and the veterinarian clinic, and then there are two vacant lots there. Those two vacant lots were part of Phase 1 of the Maple Heights subdivision, and they were approved back in 2003 as R3 residential lots. The funny thing is, and we talk about what we're dealing with now, the funny thing is that the plat did not get recorded until January of 2004, even though the final subdivision was approved in 2003. It's kind of unusual. Sometimes there are comments that the engineer has that the planning commission says, "We're going to approve your plat as long as you address the comments that your plat the engineer put forth." So maybe it takes a couple of months to do that. But before the plat was recorded, and about four months after it was approved, the developer came in and requested the change of zoning on those two lots, six and seven, the central commercial. And the interesting thing is, I personally think that the developer should have been required to amend that final plat to show that the zoning had been changed before it was recorded, but that didn't happen. And that's not really the end of the world. We can navigate through it legally. The problem it creates is unintended consequences because unless you do some thorough research into the documentation, you might not realize that. Here's the negative side to it. That development was billed as a residential development. It has residential homes to the left of it, or the right if you're facing them, and across the street. We have a development company or a builder who has purchased those two lots, and they want to build the residential homes that were originally scheduled to be on that lot. But because the zoning was changed to central commercial, they have to get a special exception to do that. So the planning commission heard their appeal last night to get the special exception. They made a recommendation to the Board of Appeals to approve that recommendation, to allow them to build two residential homes because that fits the character of what is there as opposed to building a commercial property. The reason why you folks are going to come into play is that there could be some unintended consequences if we do not restore the zoning of those lots to R3. And I talked earlier about unintended consequences of what you could do in a commercial zone and what you can or can't do in a residential. In a commercial zone, which that is currently zoned, you can't have a home occupation. So there are probably folks in the Maple Heights subdivision that have home occupations. The new owners moving in there in the same house, the same-looking style house, and a residential home the same size, will not be permitted to have a home occupation because it's zoned central commercial. Likewise, you cannot have a halfway house or a group home in an R3 residentially zoned area, but you can in a central commercial area. So you could have, pick the scope, the spectrum. You could have hypothetically a halfway house or a group home coming into those residential homes in the future, or you could have those residents not being able to have a home occupation. So the planning commission, it was a recommendation that the staff made to the planning commission last night to request the Mayor and Commissioners to change the zoning. And the Mayor and Commissioners are the only ones who can change the zoning. But in order to do that, you would craft a resolution, and that resolution has to go to the planning commission for review before you guys can vote on it. You don't have to accept the recommendation, but to, the planning commission is already moving towards the other rezoning that was talked about in the comprehensive plan. So you, I have to discuss this with the attorney, whether you're going to get one resolution that will handle all of the items, or individual resolutions for each particular one. So I didn't want that to be a surprise. This is one of those things, it's moving really quickly, and we need to get ahead of it before we have unintended consequences. So Commissioner Vaughn, I'm not sure if you wanted to jump in at that point?
I have something to say.
Okay. So we, last night, we heard that request. We are still dealing with the proposal for Stevens Reserve to build some homes in there. The engineering firm were reviewing the traffic studies. The planning commission was very clear at their last meeting that they were not comfortable with that development the way it is currently being proposed, which, and by no means am I saying this in a disparaging way, it's not meant to be that, it's just that we're getting the development community that thinks they can dust off plans that they submitted in 2003, basically going on 19 years later and just resubmit all those plans and be grandfathered on all the code changes that might have come into play. And maybe at one time, that used to happen here in town, because as we know, we have some funky things in some of our neighborhoods that don't make sense. But the planning commission has basically said, "No, you're not doing that. You're submitting a whole new set of plans, and it has to comply with today's codes," whether that be stormwater management codes through the county, floodplain regulations in our community that we have, or any kind of changes in our zoning code. So that's the other thing. The third item that I wanted to address that the Mayor had asked me to address is to give everyone an update on the trailer park down there. There is a perception out there that the Town of Rising Sun is prohibiting the landowner to rebuild those trails. That is not the case. The Town of Rising Sun is charged and responsible for enforcing floodplain regulations, and there's consequences if we do not enforce the floodplain regulations. Floodplain regulations are driven by the Federal Emergency Management Administration. They're the ones who do surveys all through the United States, and they determine whether there are areas that will flood. And they classify them as flood zones and floodways, with floodways being basically the channel from point A to point B that the water travels down. And if you can imagine, you get flood zones because so much water is coming through the channel that it gets over the edges of the channel and goes out, let's call it a prairie, goes out into a flat land area, and the water rises, especially if it's encapsulated with steep banks. So in a flood zone area, you are permitted to rebuild any structure as long as you bring it up to two feet higher than the base flood elevation that FEMA has determined. If it's in a floodway, imagine this, and let me describe it to you this way. You're standing on a flat piece of ground, and the water's rising. The worst thing you have to worry about is if it runs down in your boots that you're wearing, per se. That's floodwater rising. In a floodway, the water's moving, and it's moving under force. And so the requirements in a floodway say you can't build any structure back in the floodway because that water would come down and hit that structure, and now it has, one, if it doesn't rip it out of the ground and move it, it causes the floodway or the floodzone to spread out further because now the water's clearly not going in the channel or the street, and now it's spreading out into larger areas. So we are required to enforce that floodplain regulations, and if we don't, we do not qualify for national flood insurance. And what a lot of people don't realize is that when you contact your insurance company to get flood insurance, if you think you're in an area that you want to get flood insurance, whether you're at a floodplain or not, within limitations, you can get certain levels of flood insurance. But if the community is not accepted in the national flood insurance program, then an insurance company can't sell you flood insurance in that jurisdiction area because you're not enforcing the floodplain regulations. What that says in layman's terms is when you apply for flood insurance, the insurance company is writing that policy, but the money's coming from the federal government when you have a damage, whether the insurance company is getting reimbursed from the federal government or the money's coming directly to you. I always sort of look at it as something very similar to what is it, Part B in Medicare? You have to get a Part B plan. You get that through your insurance company, but it's a very finite boundaries or borders that they can sell you. So same thing with national flood insurance. So if we don't enforce the floodplain regulations, then we don't qualify for flood insurance, and none of our residents in the incorporated limits of the Town of Rising Sun, they would be at jeopardy of not being able to get flood insurance. So obviously, we are enforcing these regulations because we not only have a legal obligation to, we have an obligation to the rest of our residents, so they're not negatively impacted. And furthermore, we have an obligation to the people that are living there to make sure that they're not in any harm's way by the way things are done. So the Town of Rising Sun is not stopping them from rebuilding. They just have to rebuild to a set of standards that meet the FEMA or floodplain regulations. And the Mayor wanted to make sure that I, you know, brought everybody up to speed on that. We're not telling him he can't rebuild. We're just telling him he has to rebuild per the regulations. So that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
There's only a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. First off, you all have the blotter, a short narrative of what we've encountered the last two weeks. Second, the, as you all are aware, one of the vehicles was involved in an accident. It has been totaled out according to the insurance company, so we'll be looking to try to find something to replace or do something with that. Secondly, the vehicle that we ordered back in June still hasn't gone to production, so we don't know when that may happen. I know other agencies have gone different methods and matters to get vehicles, and they've had some success, so we might have to look into those. But as of now, that vehicle has not been produced yet by Chevy. And lastly, we've been down manpower with two officers that were out injured. They're slowly starting to come back. We've got one that's returned, McKenna has been returned to work, and things are starting to look a little bit better. We are still looking for applicants. We had gotten a little rush of applicants at one point in time, but many of them weren't qualified, and we had to move on. So if someone's out there that's watching that feels as though that they want to be a police officer, we welcome you, come on in, we'll give you the application and go from there. And that's my report, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Calvin, has the Town Commissioner?
No, I have not seen him log in.
Then how about the Town Commissioner?
Yes, they are. Let me move them over here. I'm going to click on Ryan first. Hello, Ryan. We're having the same audio problem that we had last night. Give me one second.
We're having sound issues all around, Calvin. The channels open here and there today are going to be suspended. Unless he wants to be working.
Click on the arrow next to the mute button.
That's, yeah, I was going to get it back to the TVs because it's not... Ryan? Yes. It did this last night.
Calvin, next to the mute button, there's an arrow pointing up, click on that.
Next to the mute button?
The next to the mute button down at the bottom of the main corner screen.
Right down here? There's here.
Between mute and stop video, there's an arrow pointing up, click on that.
Is it here?
Yes. Go to the right a little bit.
Yeah, there's nothing there. We did this earlier, and we had, if for some reason, it's losing connection to the TVs because we did a sound check.
Change that to...
Yeah.
Click on zero. All right, now change it to...
Yeah, that's, that's... When I did it today, I clicked on one of these. Ryan? Has the volume on the TVs can turn again? Ryan?
Yep, I'm here.
There it is. We got you now.
All right, I'm going to get started. Please just try and begin if you cannot hear me, just break right in or say something.
Okay.
I will be brief, I promise. We made some progress on several fronts, just wanted to report on some meetings coming up related to the projects that we've been working on. MDE has agreed with our approach to close out the CWA water supply portion of the PAC-1 contract. So next week, we'll be conducting a cycle through with the MDE inspector, primarily at the FDR Center, so we'll coordinate that with Grand DPW. Sorry, Ryan, we're having audio issues in the room. No, it's no problem at all. It happens. Do you want me to proceed?
Yeah, the elected body can hear you. It's just not going out on the YouTube stream.
Gotcha. Okay, I can wrap up in 30 seconds. We're setting up a meeting with Grand DPW and Calvin to go over our Mount Street water and broadband project. We have the alignment finalized, and so we want to get the town's review before we start looking at the project three-dimensionally and dealing with the processes and the comparisons. Also have a meeting planned with Calvin next week to discuss several water waste water items. I can wrap my update up there if anybody has any questions for me. If not, I will pass it over to Scott. Scott, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Koenig. I'm an engineer for KCI out of the Land Development Section, and my report is relatively brief as the Town Manager touched on a number of things. We're working with the Town Manager on several development-related issues, and we'll be reviewing applications once they're formally submitted. But as we work our way through the traffic impact studies with our traffic section, and we have issues related to stormwater, infrastructure, public services, public safety, all those things are playing into our review, and what we hope to be able to articulate and advocate for are really the goals and objectives of the town as we move through the development process. There are a number of things that obviously affect development, and our objective really is to report ideas and recommendations that benefit the Town of Rising Sun. is to report ideas and recommendations that benefit the town of Rising Sun both now and in the future because infrastructure, engineering improvements, they're supposed to last generations. So keep all those things in mind when we're reviewing plans. On the street program side, we're still pestering the contractor for the final billing from the last street program. All of the improvements are complete except for some striping of the road, and the weather has really not been favorable for that at this point. So we expect to be processing that bill as soon as it's received and making our recommendations to the town manager for payment. But as of today, we have not received that bill, so...
So Scott?
If there's any questions, yes?
This is Judy. I did see that bill come through. I sent it over to AP today because I thought it'd come from you guys. I'll get that back over to you in a minute.
Yeah, we would like to review it just to make sure it matches all of our stuff, and I'm surprised it didn't copy us, but we have not seen it as of today. So I appreciate that. But once we, we'll be closing that project out fully in the spring because there's retentions that has to happen for a little while, just to make sure everything functions the way it's supposed to for the, till the next season. But all in all, we thought it was a good program. We're looking forward to working with the town manager, the town staff in 2022 on these development-related issues, and then also coordinating with Ryan's group to make sure that the infrastructure catches up to the needs of the town. That's all I have.
Thank you. So who wanted to? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Braun?
I have no report.
Commissioner Shepherd?
No report. And I'm gonna have no report tonight. So upcoming town meetings, the next meeting is January 25th, followed by February 8th and February 22nd and March 8th. Upcoming holidays, Monday, Town Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day, and on the Monday, February 21st, Town Hall will be closed for President's Day. And I don't believe either of those holidays affect trash or recycling, correct?
No, if you look at ICB, it keeps a list of holidays that are affected.
Okay. So garbage is every Monday. Move to Tuesday if Town Hall falls, if Town Holiday falls on Monday. So on the 17th and 21st of February, they'll fall to the Tuesday afterwards. Trash and recyclables will be picked up Friday, pending weather-related issues. And holidays upcoming are New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day. And with that, is there anything else to come before the board tonight? Oh, yeah, do we have an update on the water main break?
The update on the water main break? We have a... We have an issue, we... It's always been a problem with the amount of old water lines that are underground in the town from many years ago. And lots of things have been done that sometimes when we dig up to the street, we're like, wow, there's a line there. We didn't know there was a line there. And there's no records from back in the day indicating whether or not there's any valves on those lines. So that was a case, that was a case the other day where we had a leak that appeared to present itself where we had had a leak a year ago, but it was actually just a leak that rode underneath the blacktop and then came out at a patch that we had put in. The guys spent every bit of Sunday digging and digging and digging and trying to find this. They used our leak detection kit that we have, but I think a lot of it had to do with the number of lines that were in the area that it was throwing into a loop. Long story short, they ended up finding a leak right over near the curb where there was a sewer line running through there, an old eight-inch line that we're not sure if it's abandoned or not, and an existing six-inch line that we currently have. The difficult thing is the leak was right on a tee. And normally, when the leak is on a straight section of pipe, you can put a clamp on it. Our guys, as they always do, did a phenomenal job of basically reshaping the clamp so that it would fit around the tee, so that they could get it all closed back up for the next day for a contractor to come out and do more extensive repairs. So again, hats off to Grant and Billy and Chris for coming up with the way. They stayed at it all day long. It rained, anybody knows. It rained on Sunday. They were in the mud, working it out, and they got it resolved. The scary thing is, I think Grant really likes trotting around in the mud like that. He's like, you know, chief, you see him out there. He's always got a smile on his face. There's nothing that darts Grant, and Billy's right there with him. So again, hats off to our guys for slugging through that.
With that, is there anything else to come before the board tonight? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second. Second. Okay. All in favor to adjourn? Aye. With that, we adjourn.